Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And the first item on this work session agenda is the third parking deck. We have our Public Works Director who will be leading the discussion. Just stepped out for an emergency phone call. We may have a couple more council members joining us as we go on. But we're going to go ahead and get this conversation started. I'm sure everyone had time to review the memo in the packet. We were going to be talking about this last week, but we got a little tied up in some other business. So these two items are back on our work session agenda to devote a little more time to them. But at this point, I'll just turn it over to our Public Works Director and talk about the plans for the third parking deck.
Sure. Well, there's been a number of conversations and discussions, whether it's been the parking study in 2012 with Rich &amp; Associates or Urban Partners regarding the third parking deck. It probably goes back further than that. And because of these conversations and current conversations and discussions regarding the deck, staff decided that maybe we ought to bring it to council and decide where we're going to go forward from here. So we did some research, looked at the studies, saw what they recommended in those discussions. And the Rich &amp; Associates, they basically said, more or less, not to build a deck unless it's tied to a major project. Urban Partners pretty much repeated that same mindset, which is the deck needed to be tied to something major or major development. The location, as you went through, we talked about costs. Right now, in today's dollars, you're looking at probably upwards of $20,000 per space to construct a deck. You know, so we have some budget numbers in there projecting of, you know, it could be $10 to $13 million, depending on the size of the deck. So it's quite a, you know, if we decide to move forward with the deck, you're talking about some pretty heavy costs. And we have to figure out how to budget for something like that or how to pay for that. There's never been actually a location chosen. It's been discussed, but there is no location. We've talked about Antietam Street. The city does own some property on Antietam, but it's very small, just a couple lots. One's a parking lot, others are small properties. That's really kind of a really quick summary of what's in this memo. But the bottom line is, what staff recommending is that we don't move forward with the third parking deck at this time. We just don't have the patrons that will pay for the parking. We just don't have enough drivers or parkers, actually, to pay for a deck. And to build one on speculation would be, we'd have to find funds from outside or non-city resources, whether that's state, federal, county, whatever. It would have to come from some other resources. Otherwise, we're looking at putting some serious tax dollars into a parking deck.
Eric, do you want to just touch on your pie charts and stats a little bit? Because we do get comments or questions from time to time in regards to the occupancy of the two decks that we have now, A&E and University District.
Yeah. All the charts you see in the back here, basically, there's a set of charts for A&E, which has 185 spaces, and there's charts back here for University Deck, which has 440 spaces. So the data you're looking at is basically cumulative for a 12-month period, basically from July of 2013 to July 2000 or June 2014. And basically, what this is telling us is this, that on average, on any given day, the decks are occupied at most half the time. In other words, even though we've oversold A&E deck with passes, we may have 200 passes sold to that, there's never any real time that we have more than 50% occupancy in there. Now, there are times when it peaks, where we've had to close it. This weekend, we had to close it several times. But overall, both decks are only about half occupied. And that's what all these charts are pretty much saying. For this weekend, with the pop-up shops, the August Overfest, the Central Lot, pretty much being out of commission as far as parking, A&E got filled, and we had to shut it down several times. But we also had, there was a wedding at Maryland Theater on Saturday and a birthday party at Wolves &amp; Bears that was hosting 100, 150 people, I understand. So we had three major events in that spot. But the University Deck never got full. We never closed it down. In fact, the peak occupancy was probably around 230 to 250 cars in that deck, even with all this going on. So it's kind of hard to justify on our end, as far as staff, to come to you and recommend building a third deck when we see this type of occupancy rates.
I think this gets back to the idea that parking, the parking problem is just a perceived problem. It's not an actual problem.
Right.
It would be a good problem to have. But, you know, one of the things, one of the pieces of feedback I heard about the events of this past weekend were from folks who said how easy they found it to park in downtown. That, you know, whether it was along the street or in one of the decks, or even in one of the lots that's just, you know, off of Church Street or something, the farmer's market, they, I didn't hear any complaints about not enough parking.
Well, the study from 2012 indicated that over half the parking in downtown is privately owned. So these pop-up shops, if they're in private, and a lot of them were in properties not owned by the city, they probably had their own parking for that, for that staff and such. Because we didn't hear anything about needing parking from any of them. I know some of the pop-up shops were at least in two of our buildings, and there was parking available at both of those. So, you know, they're just, I'm glad to hear that. But yeah, there's a lot of parking out there that's not even city-owned that can be utilized.
And I think it's important for people to know, too, that currently, our surface parking, the street parking subsidizes the decks that we have. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, the University Deck, the debt service on it was paid off, I believe, in 2012, summer of 2012, which helped a lot. But the other A&E deck still, you know, was built for $3.5, $3.6 million, somewhere in that ballpark. You know, there's still a lot of debt service on that. But the parking on the street, the parking lots, and parking enforcement all support the parking system. A parking deck is very hard to support itself for many years because the costs are just so high.
And they essentially paid the debt service on the University.
Pretty much.
While we had the debt service.
Pretty much.
Most of it was paid by the surface lots.
That's correct. On-street parking and surface lots.
I remember that a few years ago.
That's correct.
I guess the question I always come back to is, at what point will we know, okay, this is the right time to build a deck? I mean, do we need to wait until there is a parking problem and there really is a shortage? Or wait until the project comes along that we can tie it to? You know, we talk about the Columbia Bank Lot. You know, that was the one that was identified, you know, when we're talking about a stadium. But there, I mean, is there a possibility to create a public-private partnership that would not only help get the deck built, but also some of those buildings around that quadrant, you know, get them to spur economic development at the same time, rehab those upper floors?
Yeah. From what I understand of the studies, and I've only been in parking price since, I'll say, early 2009, so my experience is limited also. But everything I read indicates, yeah, if you had a major, if you had a developer come in and say, hey, we're going to build 155 units of whatever, and yeah, there might be an opportunity. That'd be the time to put something together. The stadium was definitely one of those that would probably be a good catalyst for a parking deck. But for whatever reasons or reasons, it didn't pan out. I don't know if there's any one set thing that says this is how it goes. Let me talk about the Frederick Study, because that's been kind of mentioned here, too. I went back and reviewed that a little bit. They did their study in 2003. And at that time, they had three parking decks. And while they were doing the study, they were already in negotiations for the fourth deck, in buying property for the fourth deck. When Desmond Associates is a company that did that study, they had already, they already kind of knew that they were already at max capacity. So the study was only confirming what they already knew, which was they were running out of parking. They also, Frederick also, in the study, talks about projects that would occur in zero to two years, three to five years, six to 10 years. And in zero to two years, City of Frederick knew of either in the works or definitely was going to happen, at least 100,000 square feet of property that was going to be renovated or go back and go back on the tax rolls, plus, I think, 100 to 155 residential units. In three to five years, there was another 300,000 square feet that potentially was going to come online. So they had a lot of projects that they knew of and could tell them what was coming down the line. The fifth deck had to do with the Church Street deck down there, which was coming to the end of its useful life. It was pretty much, they had to tear it down and rebuild it. So they knew a fifth deck was needed in that area to help take up when they tore that deck down to rebuild it. So they currently have five parking decks down there. But there was a lot of things that were very different there that was occurring here.
Some more certainty about development in the pipeline would be a trigger for us to...
I think the Carroll Creek Project was even underway at that time. Wasn't finished, but it was already progressing.
Right.
So there was those type of projects they already knew about. They didn't build any decks on speculation. It was clear, they had things that were happening and were going to happen. And if they didn't occur, probably the fifth deck probably wouldn't have gotten built.
So do we, because I think we want to send the signal to investors who, you know, we're going to try to market our lot and build new office development. How do we maintain a commitment to moving in that direction, but not do it on speculation? I mean, do we just keep it in our planning documents and, you know, keep it associated with this potential office development and use that as the trigger? Like you say, in zero to two years, we know we're going to have this many thousands of square feet of office.
And in the Urban Partners Report, they do say that at the time, the 70,000, the first office building is built, 70,000 square foot, there's enough parking, but at that point, they would trigger, they would see that as triggering us to, you need to start building the third deck for future development.
Right, right. And we do have a placeholder in our budget in '16, I believe it is, for design. But it's just a placeholder. It doesn't say we have to do that.
Right.
So developers could see our budget and say, yeah, we have that in the pipeline. If we need to do that, we have, you know, we have a way to do that. But we have to tie it to something. We can't just build it and hope they fill the space.
Mayor, you asked a very good question. And the thing that we don't want to happen is for us to run to a, into a situation where we find ourselves, all of a sudden, one day, way behind on parking spaces. So I'm suggesting that maybe we, the council and Eric, Mayor and Council and Eric, should have this conversation each year, so that we can see the trends and understand what our needs are going to be in terms of a parking deck.
Well, fortunately, our parking decks do have, you know, a lot of mechanical devices in place that we can track. I mean, every week, and we could report on providing you some occupancy rates and things like that. I can provide some other data for that. So we can watch that weekly. We can see if all of a sudden it's spiking or, you know, we also know the University of Maryland is progressing. But I can tell you, the last three or four years, they've had about the same number of parkers, even if their enrollment's gone up, they've had about the same number of people getting parking passes. We know Barbara Ingram's talking about expansion, but they're only talking about maybe 50 spaces, which could be absorbed either into our system, or even the county almost, I would say, has enough spaces on her own to make that happen.
And I understand that. But I just think you've done a lot of work here, a lot of good work, and it's pretty convincing. And if we were to have this sort of report from you each year.
Sure.
That we could have some sense of what's going to be happening in the future, hopefully.
Well, and staff would need to anyway, because we need to watch it in our budget system, because we're, you know, we're trying to project out our CIPs at least five years. We're trying to figure out where to place that appropriately. And that's part of what this conversation is, is to figure out exactly where do we place it in there. But should this, you know, the study of Urban Partners, and we get a developer, and they build a, you know, 40,000 to 70,000 square foot building, that's a great first step. And we, you know, we threw that into the mix, and then we decide when the right time is.
Well, I guess it wouldn't have to be yearly, maybe every other year or something.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah. Anyway, could I ask one follow-up question?
Sure.
Is the, are the problems at the A&E deck finished yet? Have you...
With the elevator and such?
With the elevator.
No, we're getting closer.
And the enclosures and so on.
My, closures?
Well, you're going to put some enclosures there for the rain.
Yeah, part of that is done. The other part is going to get started probably the first of next week. In fact, I'm meeting with staff tomorrow to figure out, to lay out the details. It shouldn't take too long to get that put together. Then we'll get the elevator fixed, and we'll be back in service.
So the elevator is working fine now?
No, not yet. Not until we feel, not until we build this other part. So I'm hoping within the next few weeks. I would say by the end of September, we should have the elevator up and running again.
You want to build a shelter to protect it from rain, which causes the problem.
Right. The way the deck is designed, on the fourth floor, where the elevator shaft is and where the stairwell is, they wanted an open stairwell, which is great, because people like that open feeling. The problem is, we've had these monsoon rains that, that say, I don't care about what kind of drainage you've designed, I'm just going to find an open hole. Unfortunately, the open hole's been the elevator shaft, and it's done a lot of damage to the elevator. I don't want to, until I can find a way to block that water, which we have, until we build that, I don't want to fix the elevator, because I don't want to have to keep expending money to keep fixing it.
Well, yeah, understandably.
Right. In fact, the other day, we had rain again. It was an inch and a half hour or so. I mean, we just seem to get these monsoon rains. So, but we're close. We're close.
Thank you. Some questions and then a couple of comments. Eric, the occupancy figures for the University Deck.
Yes.
They, I assume they include the university parking, the university parking permits.
It includes everybody, yeah.
It includes everybody.
That's the actual people.
Everybody actually there.
That, yeah, that's, that's not how many permits we have sold, or how many cash sales...
Right. How many vehicles are in there?
Are actually in that deck.
Now, are some of those other spaces reserved, or are they open and available?
No, no. The only ones that obviously are reserved are handicapped spaces.
Right.
We used to have one driver that paid for a reserved space, but he has since moved on, and so we have none that are reserved.
And I guess my comments are, you know, I pretty much agree with what's in the report. It's what I've been saying for a long time. I'm not against a parking garage. It has to be in conjunction with other major development. And that's what all our studies say. I've said that we have plenty of parking. Our studies say that. But the problem we run into is, for instance, you know, there's discussion of the academic hub, or most people call it the Barbara Ingram Expansion, or whatever, if that ever takes place. Well, parking, parking is a big issue. No, it's not. No, it's not. We have all this space. But some of the board members said that garage isn't adequate. It's a whole city block away. And then that's the problem we face. It's a whole city block away, and you have to cross the street. I mean, you know, and that's the perception. I mean, and we'll never get around that. I mean, if you go to Frederick and say, I'm not going to walk more than a half a block, it will never go anywhere if you want to use Frederick. But there, that's, that's okay there. So it, you know, I don't think we'll have to work to find spaces. I think we have them. I think we said that when we were discussing all that. But I don't think we should necessarily give them away, but we certainly have them.
I agree with that.
And, well, and we also have to watch what, you know, what's the right number is. But the other thing is, you know, people say, well, if you build it, the buildings will get fixed up. There is absolutely no guarantee that anybody will fix a building if we build a parking garage. And if we put it in the wrong place, somebody wants to fix up a building over here, we'll do it. What I say is, you know, bring us your solid plans. Get your neighboring properties together. Bring us your commitments to fix up your buildings, and we'll see about the parking. But bring us firm commitments. I know that when we were talking about the stadium and building garages and all that, several owners said, well, I'm going to, I'm going to escalate my price three times and try to sell it. Not fix them up, not fix them up, but flip them. That's the attitude we have. So, you know, there's a lot more than just physical things to overcome here. There's attitude issues. And, you know, get a group together, you know, and we'll work with you. You know, and get enough floor space to be renovated, that would be a major development. But, but for us to build it and then people to flip their properties, that's, that's putting the whole load on all the taxpayers, because taxpayers will pay for this. We won't come close to paying for it with parking revenue. Not even close.
Well, what are the odds we could get the state as a partner when it comes to the judicial system that is a heavy user of that, especially around that southwest block off of the square?
I don't know. I get the impression the state doesn't fund parking decks.
But they, we just signed a bunch of contracts, because they require so many spaces. So why wouldn't they, they do that with a deck? And just instead of paying money every year for spaces, they could make a contribution towards a deck? That would be one good use of state money, I would think.
Yep.
I know that's not a question anyone can answer.
Although the state is one of our good partners, they're one of the people that are investing downtown.
Sure. But I'm saying, if they're already spending money to rent spaces for people, why not get them to invest in a parking deck?
[inaudible].
Yeah.
Oh, trust me, I will be.
I know you will.
It's on my list.
Well, and then just a reminder, and we tried to project that a little bit in the CIP page from the budget that's also attached towards the end of your packet. But as the city gets closer to the point where, you know, this idea of staying ahead of a shortage on parking, you have to allow time for acquisition and design. This is a project that, you know, it's not going to be two months to, hey, let's get this thing started. Rodney and his staff are going to need time for design and engineering. Obviously, we got to pick a site and acquire it and deal with the property owner on any potential impact there. So that's part of this process.
Again, I think Urban Partners said, if you get a commitment for around 70,000 square feet over here, when you, not when it's built, but when you know it's going to get built, you need to start planning a garage for the next phases and planning to build it and get it built. At least get it so you can build it at that point. So we're willing to build a garage just when we need to.
And is everybody comfortable with that strategy? I mean, that seems like the most reasonable way to go.
Right. Well, you, obviously, you examine the situation then, but, you know, it seems to make sense.
I don't hear anyone saying, let's build a deck on spec.
Oh, no. No, I've been against that one.
Not with these...
I was worried on that one.
Not with these numbers.
No. And the 70,000 square feet, what are we talking about? We're talking about a building that's supposed to go way up somewhere here?
The surface lot development that was in the Urban Partnership with the...
Well, I haven't, I'm sorry.
That would be the first...
I'm sorry, I didn't miss anything. Okay.
That would be the first phase.
All right. And my question is there, is that we're worried about the taxpayers paying. Is that not going to belong to the city, that building? It's a matter of, Urban Partners said, oh, we'll get people to lease it. But reality is, who actually is going to own the building?
Well, the developer would own the building.
If they have a developer to come in to do it. Okay? But that has never been really, okay? And that's what I'm getting at. Correct.
So I think in the next, what, couple months, by November, I think, when I was talking with John Listich, and I think we can expect an RFQ to come before us sometime before this year is out, for a developer to...
Oh, I hope, and I hope it's etched in gold.
To get the work out to developers.
Because I'd hate to see that one go belly up. And here we would be then with, oh gee, yeah, we got this space, now we're going to do a deck. And then, for some unknown reason, it's not going to happen.
Well, a developer wouldn't build an office building without having leases lined up.
You know what, David? I've been here too long to see how many have gone belly up with a lot of things. So, yeah. I'd like to have it etched.
Well, that's why we want to put the requests for qualifications out and try to get the best developer partner we could get. The idea would be not that the city would own the building. We own the property that we could then use as an incentive to get a developer to come in, to be competitive on price per square foot. Any other thoughts on the third parking deck?
Now, just a, once again, for the umpteenth time since I've been on the council, there's lots of parking in Hagerstown, lots of parking on the service, if you like that, in our garages. Come on down. Even when there's busy events, this weekend was packed with people in town, and we had space in the garage.
And we actually have flights.
And I know people that, you know, found lots of space on the streets. So, you know, we have it. It's a myth that we don't have parking. If you expect to park right next to the building, which you can't do at Walmart, you can't do it in most places, then maybe you can't. But if, you know, if your criteria is, I'm not going to walk more than a half a block, but when you go to a large shopping center, I guarantee you, you'll walk more than that.
It's a perception.
It's perception. We've got parking, developers. We get to man, we're willing to move forward. Even though we're going to have to swallow a lot of the expenses, but we need to have a partner. So we're not, we're not, we're willing, if the right deals are there.
So we'll keep it in the CIP for the out-years and make adjustments as necessary as developments occur? All right. Thank you. Any other action on that, or?
I think that covers that well. I was going to just ask while Rodney's here, could we squeeze him in just to give you an update on Broadfording Road?
Sure.
Major road widening project enclosure there. I just want to, we've done press releases and...
Sticking a whole mark.
And info for Mayor and Council, but want to make sure you're aware of this for next week.
The project's progressing?
Well, it's the reconstruction of Broadfording Road between Maryland Route 58, Salem Avenue Extended, and Hollyhock, basically just north of the Best Buy Shopping Center. We put the utilities in, and now it is time to have what we've planned for a shutdown of the road to allow us to make improvements to the base of the road. You think about, that road was built 50 years ago. It was basically a farm lane, and now there's 15,000 cars a day on it. There's not enough base there to convey the amount of traffic that's going to be on the road now and what's going to be on in the future. So what we have to do is remove the blacktop, and we put a cement, cement powder base in there to make a good road bed, similar to what we did on Eastern Boulevard. And it makes an excellent road. But we got to close the road to do that. So starting next Tuesday, September 2nd, Monday's Labor Day, so Tuesday's the day we're going to close that section of road and be able to tear out all the blacktop and do this base repair and put the curbs in and move forward. It'll be closed for about four to six weeks, hopefully shorter, but we're saying four to six weeks. The message is, if you want to go to Walmart, if you want to go to Best Buy or anything out there, use the Route 40 entrance. There will be a detour at the north end, but we're just trying to get everybody to use the Route 40, the southern entrance. So, but it's moving along.
Great.
Rodney, we've explained this to council in the past, but the funding, it's...
It's almost completely developer-funded. There was a contribution of $250,000 from the county, because originally, it was their road. So that was their portion that they put into it. The rest of it was developer-funded.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're on to the vacant structures program, which is a catalyst project number eight, Neighborhood Support Strategy.
Good afternoon.
Welcome back.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council.
Yeah, we're back to continue the discussion on revisions to the... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We're back to continue discussions on revisions to the vacant structures program to better position the city to protect our neighborhoods from blight and to protect our first responders from unmonitored vacant structures. We met with you last week to begin the discussion, and we, we heard that your priorities are more focused in the program that we brought to you. So what we're suggesting are some revisions that hopefully would better address where the council is as opposed to what we brought you last week. And we heard that the top priority was to address visible blight. A second priority would be to monitor vacant structures to protect neighborhoods from blight. And we did an estimate to try to break it down between blighted versus, if you will, non-blighted. At any given time, we figured there are about 350 vacant, blighted vacant residential properties, another 800 vacant residential properties in unknown condition at this point, and then approximately 90 blighted non-residential buildings, just to give you[1719.26] to give you an idea of the volume. We heard that it's a high priority to improve the, make improvements to exterior conditions in the very near term as opposed to inspections of the interior, and that there were also, we were, we were in a different place than the council in terms of the designated contact person, the insurance, the continuously vacant period for the properties that weren't blighted, foreclosed, or placarded, and then the enforcement of foreclosed properties, and then the SEP Ted issue. So those are where we were hearing that we were not right, we were not exactly where the council was. And so we proposed in the memo, some revisions to try to get closer to what we were hearing from the council. The first issue of blight versus simply vacant, what we're suggesting, in order to be more responsive, is to continue with the original proposal, which is to bring in immediately foreclosed, blighted, and properties that are placarded, placarded as uninhabitable. But then, for those properties that are vacant but don't have that type of classification, expand the continuously vacant period from four months to six months. So it would have to be sitting vacant six months with none of the blight foreclosure or uninhabitable situations before it would come in, rather than four months, six months. On the second issue, on the next issue, which was the issue of inspections, we were proposing that when you immediately come into the program, we would do interior and exterior inspections. We were hearing that it's more of a priority to get to the exterior first, lesser, a second priority would be the interior, and so in order to address what we were hearing, we would suggest that on the initial registration, it would be just an interior inspection, and then the next, the next go-around for inspections would include the interior inspection. But we wanted to give you, give you some more information about why it was that we feel it's important to do interior inspections very early on, and we have some photographs that Paul can put on the overhead for you, and he can describe to you what you're looking at.
Some of the conditions that we've seen in some of the vacant properties that we've done in securing on and done inspections in to see what was going on. One, we have conditions of stuff in the stairwell where our first responders would be falling over these items.
Is that a board going off the stair there, or?
Some sort of debris.
Okay.
Also, we have on the, more debris in a hallway that would be blocking access to other areas of the structure. In this property, actually, the joist here was actually sagging, and the roof was collapsing, and as you can tell from the water laying on the floor area of the significant amount of damage that was being caused. I do not have this picture crooked. That is the floor collapsing inside of one of these vacant properties. Again, you cannot tell this from the outside, it was only only seen from the interior of the property. As seen very common in a lot of the vacant properties in town, we have holes in the floors. Sometimes they're along the walls, such as that. At times, it can be in the middle of the hallway, as those would have dropped right down to the first floor of the property. Again, more holes in the floors.
Can I answer? Is what we're seeing currently a violation of anything?
You're not allowed to have any holes in the floors.
So what would you resolve with these pictures?
We have the owners make proper measures to make sure that someone would not fall through the floors. It's not a complete repair to the extent of redoing the entire floor. It is making sure that rotted material is removed and some sort of temporary measures taken to prevent someone from falling.
The, if I may, the property maintenance code has specific codes related to vacant structures, so it's not bringing it up to a habitable standard, simply making it safe. And in cases like this, council member sweeping away the debris, putting plywood over those holes, putting a couple screws down through it, that would suffice. So-
What about the ones where the whole place was shifting and/or-
That, that property is posted currently because it actually involves five other properties in a row that are all collapsing like that. This is the property we've been dealing with for a long time on East Franklin Street. And from, from the exterior, we would not have known that the inside was like that. And these are the types of conditions and where we are trying to find the balance that we've been directed to find with interior versus exterior inspections, and that's why we're recommending that after the first cycle, we would at least, in the second go-around, if it stays vacant for that long of a period, we would require an interior inspection to uncover and then order work done to at least make things as safe as possible.
Where I'm coming from is, let's go back to the, the properties that have been posted and placarded. What else are we doing?
On the ones that are posted and placarded, for example, the ones on Franklin, our legal counsel's working with the five different owners, the insurance companies, everyone trying to negotiate a solution.
So the question I've come to is, we pay us this entire ordinance just the way you want it. What's going to change with those properties on Franklin Street? What's going to be the difference with this ordinance versus what we have?
The difference would be that we would know much sooner than what we had found out, because deterioration like this-
I, I'm all for knowing, but see, my concern is this. I'm, I'm not concerned in finding people $500 a day, I'm, I'm concerned in remedying the problem. And if all we're going to do is identify buildings that need abatement, and our answer is, instead of abating because we can't afford it, we're going to find them, I don't think that solves our problem. The problem is the deteriorating property. And if the answer is, I mean, if what we're going to do is find a bank and a foreclosed person or someone who has no money, the properties are going to still sit there. They're still going to be a blight to the neighborhood, and for the person driving by, they're not going to see one bit of difference in the neighborhood. They're going to see somebody getting a $500 fine, but the blight is still there. The problem with, a good example, and this, I'd like to use as an example, not a criticism, okay? And I'm especially not a criticism because I'm very cutely aware that there are very positive things that are in the works. But I use this as an example because I don't have to point out a property owner, I can make government a property owner. We'll talk about Baltimore Street. Let's say those properties were in the hand of private property owners. What is the difference that would occur with this ordinance versus what we already have on the books with regards to what we would do with those homes on Baltimore Street if they were in private ownership? Would we find them, or would we tear them down and abate?
A few differences, sir. One, as I mentioned last week, from a staff perspective, there's a significant difference between having an ordinance and having a program. And we would have resources to follow up on these properties by having-
But what would we do with them when we find them? That's my question. I hear that we need staff to locate the problem. I can tell you, there's five people around this table right now that don't need staff to locate enough bladed properties that staff is already aware of. My concern is, what are we doing with them? What are we doing with the properties on Jonathan Street that are falling down, that are placarded as uninhabitable? And what is going to be the difference to the neighborhood with this ordinance versus what we're doing now? Because if we're not going to abate the problem, I don't see that we're doing anything but identifying what the problem is and saying to somebody, we're going to find them. Because there's nothing in the ordinance that allows us, as I see it, to do anything to these people except put a $500 a day fine on them, after requiring them to pay a registration fee. And I immediately look, I'm probably more looking at the residential side, okay, because it's easier for me to look there. I see residential people who get foreclosed on and leave the area, leaving the bank owning it, and under this ordinance, as I said last week, the people living in Oklahoma City that left Hagerstown have nothing to do with it, thought they weren't owner of this property, the bank foreclosed, they've been kicked out, and under this ordinance, they're subject, first of all, to a $500 a day fine for not even registering their property. And, and I just, my concern is, I don't see where, without abatement, we are solving the problem to the neighborhood. That's my concern.
If I could respond to that, sir.
Sure.
A couple of things. One, we are proposing to address the issue of enforcement. That enforcement would only be against a financial institution in the event of foreclosure. We have that listed as point five under proposed revisions. So we, we are proposing changing, or being very specific in the language, to avoid the situation that you highlighted last week.
Okay.
Uniform-
That makes me much happier.
Uniform civil citations are the state form that are used to apply municipal infraction fines against properties. And there's a box to check on uniform civil citations, and that is, is the jurisdiction seeking authority to abate the violation? And it's our plan to, in cases such as this, to check that box off. And part of the discussion we had, our last points last week, where we need to identify some seed money, and it would be a revolving thing, but we would need to identify some seed money so we can abate. We currently abate conditions throughout the city such as blighting conditions. We mow grass, we pick up trash. We do those things as a matter of routine. The city spends nearly $100,000 a year on such abatements. These types of abatements, and with this program, if we get all the pieces in place, staff would envision having an initial pool of money. And as council member Brubaker, I believe you indicated last week, that we would get the money back, and then it would kind of rotate. I believe that was part of our discussion last week.
Revolve it, yeah.
Yes, it would end up revolving.
Because they're on liens. You put it on liens-
Yes, sir.
It takes a while to get the liens back.
Yes, sir. So it is staff's recommendation that when we issue the fines, that we seek from the court authority to abate conditions such as what we're seeing here. And so, those are the things that would change between what we have now and what we would have if we have a program as opposed to simply an ordinance. So the first step is, from a staff perspective, we need to have the resources. Part of those resources is establishing a pool of funds, so the individuals working the program can check on that citation form. Yes, we are seeking authority to abate and know that we're able to carry it out. We've had times in the past where we checked that, and then when we analyze it, we simply don't have the funds to pull things off, and we have to make decisions. Is this a safety issue? Is it a blight issue? What's the likelihood we'll get our money back quickly? And, and that's the position we're currently in.
John, how are we going to, the rental registration laws seem a little bit easier to me with regards to enforcement of the registration itself.
Yes, sir.
And especially with foreclosed properties. I'm just curious, the expectations, how it is that a lending institution in North Dakota who's foreclosed on a local property in Hagerstown is going to know of their responsibility to do the registration and pay the fee, and if they don't, how are we going to know that they did not do that?
In terms of the mechanics of the program, several of the larger financial institutions have companies they hire to monitor their foreclosed properties. And the residential properties that we have registered under the current ordinance, the vast majority of those are from the banks. So in terms of publicizing it, getting the word out, that's very important. The determination we have from Mr. Boyer and Mr. Morton on the, on the fee is that we can simply file that fee as a lien against the property to fund the program.
And that's the fine you're talking about?
No, that would be the-
Oh, the registration fee.
The registration fee.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We would be able to bill that fee as taxes if it remains unpaid. So there's a huge education component to this in reaching out to the financial institutions. In our research, nothing that we are proposing is new and unique. Other jurisdictions do this, and so we're looking at their best practices, and we're going to be looking to them even more on implementation, should this body choose to direct us that, that way.
Thank you. You answered my questions appropriately.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or feedback for staff on the updates?
I want to thank Stan for responding to our concerns last week. I reviewed that, and I have a couple of just questions here. Let's see. On the second point of the summary of the revisions you've made on page two of the memo, this 20-second memo, changing the initial inspection is only an exterior inspection and the first renewal.
You're talking too much, Martin. That's all. You wore the battery out.
The issue of doing an exterior inspection and then subsequent renewal will involve both exterior and interior. Is that for non-blighted or all property under this ordinance, or is blighted going to get both immediately?
What we're proposing in the memo is that for all properties, it would be just exterior initially. And then for all properties, it would be interior and exterior at the next time it's for inspection.
And then that, and when, how long a time period is that?
We would say 12 months from when they come into the program.
Well, aren't we throwing the baby out with the bathwater here? I mean, don't we want to see inside a blighted property?
Certainly staff would like to see inside of a blighted property.
Well, but I think what we were trying to do is keep, keep somebody that has a nicely maintained property after their fourth, sixth month from having to have an interior inspection if it just doesn't seem necessary. But I don't think we were objecting to a clearly blighted property. So I think if we-
You're saying for clearly blighted or any of those other?
Right, then we'd do an interior inspection.
Upon registration.
Yeah, upon registration.
Okay.
Yeah. Properties that are blighted, placarded, probably foreclosed. I don't know, I have to think about the foreclosed.
I would think if they're financed, it's uninhabitable and they're blighted. That certainly we can all-
That's enough, yeah.
We can all agree on that.
We can agree on that part.
The one thing that, that we have seen in some foreclosed properties, I can't put a number on them, but-
People trashing them.
But people trashing them.
Yeah, I can understand.
And so it's not uncommon for people to cut a pipe and let water-
And it's more obvious, and there's it's doors posted.
I don't have a problem with foreclosed properties being-
Because they're posted as well, so it's more obvious.
And also, John is absolutely right. People, there is a certain percentage of people who trash, including cutting water pipes. I have no problem with that.
And on the contact issue, I mean, let's, you know, if we continue to have huge problems that are clearly in the way of doing business on this, let's revisit that, rather than stick in the 30 miles right now. I think it's-
Yes, sir.
Just seems arbitrary, but, but don't say, oh, don't be afraid. Let's come back if there are clear identifiable issues and ways we can address those issues, is what I would say on that. So those were, those were the concerns that, that I saw in their provisions.
I think it's good to tie the insurance to the assessed value.
Yeah.
It's a clear marker that's not even defined by us.
Yeah, so it needed to be a marker.
And then the one other issue that we haven't gotten to yet, and the police chief here is, is here to talk with you about it, is the issue of having crime prevention through environmental design standards put in the vacant structures program. We have a couple of photographs that Paul has to show you what we're talking about, and then the chief can come up and talk with you about the importance of SEP Ted.
That's your cue, chief.
I had also mentioned to the chief about the importance of the interior inspections, and it seems as if the council was okay having an interior inspection at some point because the discussion between the chief and I involved the safety of the first responders in those situations, whether it's police or fire. But if you want to talk about SEP Ted and-
Absolutely. The interior inspections, we get called to clear these properties when somebody gets inside of them, and the fire department comes out, helps us board them up, but it's that first walkthrough- But it's that first walk-through, you know, it's bad enough to look for a bad guy. You don't need to watch where you're stepping at the same time, so it helps. It helps. The SEPTED, I think we know about that. That's crime prevention through environmental design. There are some basic rules. I'm always, I commit to memory the three-foot, seven-foot rule, which is to try to keep your bushes down to three feet, your trees up to seven feet. It's not an exact science, but the idea is that people, the neighbors on either side of a property can naturally see inside that, in that yard, or a police officer may be driving by. More importantly, can naturally see into the yard a little bit better. And there's no completely overgrown bushes where you have four or five homeless people or kids from the neighborhood gathering and just attracting crime. So we often say the term persistent environmental attractor. You know, what's that persistent place on the block that's attracting everybody? And let's make it as easy as we can for the neighbors and for the police driving by to keep an eye on the property. So the bushes is a clear line of sight is one of the keys.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands, we're only talking about vacant structures. We're not talking about requiring this for everybody across the city.
That's correct. Right.
The photos that Paul has put up, this is from a property on the terrace that I went out and secured two weeks ago. And they have carriage lights, there's lights there. There's actually a light pole, a pole light out there in the yard. It's obstructed by the overgrowth of the branches. But we had received complaints from the neighbors about this property. Now, this property is clearly blighted. When you get beyond the trees, the property's in pretty rough shape. The property is not currently in foreclosure, but based upon the physical conditions, it would classify as a blighted property. There's, it's rough.
But it is vacant.
And it is vacant, yes, sir. I, when I received a report from the police, I stopped out there that Friday, or from the neighbors, I stopped out there that Friday evening. I called the police and two officers came out, cleared the building. And that's our standard procedure. We call for the police to come out, go through the building because we want to make sure that we're not securing a building, locking someone or someone's pets into the building. And so as a matter of routine, the police are going through these vacant structures.
Right. So the trees and bushes are one thing to give a clear line of sight. The other two factors are lights and locks. And the lights could be, and proposed here is an exterior light around the entrances to the doors to make sure the door hasn't been kicked in. You can drive by, see easily into the, where the exterior doors are. And then requiring locks on the doors and windows, again, to prevent people from just lifting up, lifting up an old vacant, an old vacant building where the locks don't work well and the windows. It's just going to continuously, continuously be a call for service for everybody. And it would require the locks to go on the windows and the doors to be deadbolted and secured. And yeah, so that is the main three points, I think.
Any thoughts on that? I think, I still think it's a good idea to require that for vacant structures because it just enhances the ability for the, not only the building and the first responders to be safe inside the building, but to just prevent the attractive nuisance that these kinds of properties become. And again, we're not requiring anyone else to do it except for properties where vacant structures are located. But I certainly, if I had one of these properties in my neighborhood, I'd want to keep an eye on the front door, the windows, make sure that people aren't lurking around because it becomes a threat to my property.
Of the vacant structures?
Yes, ma'am.
Are all utilities turned off? Because that would mean putting it back on.
It would mean turning it back on.
Electric back on.
It would mean--
Hoping that the water has been sufficiently taken care of in all of these.
Yes, and--
But the lighting would be--
It would require that there's electric to the property.
Yeah.
And it would require that someone, the bank or whomever, is maintaining that electric to the property. And from a staff perspective, that may mean they have to wire in a new circuit if the electric system is not sufficient. So it would require some investment on the part of the owner.
Any other thoughts on SEPTED?
Still in there, right? It's still in there.
Well, we left that, we were silent on that in our memo.
Yeah.
Last week, I believe the direction was that the majority of the council was uncomfortable with the SEPTED requirements. And that's why we asked the chief here to explain it as opposed to non-law enforcement staff trying to address it.
So Penny, are you okay with the SEPTED provisions?
Oh, I'm fine with it. And in back of the terrace, not only you looking at the front, but you go look in the back where the alleys are at. And then you talk to me about vacant structures and what conditions. I mean, you know, for the most part, most of these structures are even in the alleys. Yeah, but you're not seeing clear. And I have no problem with it.
Mr. Munson, are you, how do you feel about the SEPTED and keeping that in the revised proposal?
We at least ought to give it a try. And let me make this point while I'm talking. This is, this is an incredible problem that we're facing for our neighborhoods. And that point can't be made too clear. Since last Friday, since last Friday, I've contacted Paul four times about issues that we're sitting here discussing today. Issues all over the city. And somehow, we have got to find, and hopefully this, or this goes in some direction toward it, a way to make people fully responsible for their properties.
Thanks, Don. I guess I have some comments as well as I or they. It's I, but I want to explain what I think about this. And I commended staff last week, even though we made some suggestions, which they responded to. And I commend them again. It's not perfect. We'll run into some problems. You can't help it. This stuff, it's hard to make one size fits all.
Right.
But the main thing I want to do is, let's get on and let's do it and let's enforce. And if people say, nobody will come to Hagerstown, I say just the opposite. I think if people see that we're serious about maintenance of properties, I think people, and the kind of people we want to invest as opposed to speculative investment will want to come here if they see we're doing something about it and accomplishing something. I agree with Lou, that's the hard part, and I'm sure staff realizes that, is getting somewhere. I think something you didn't mention is, if you're threatened with fine up to $500 a day, maybe you'll fix your property without us having to do abatement and--
Big encouragement.
--and all that. So I think there's a bit of a motivating factor with that fine as well. And it says up to 500, it doesn't say 500. And, you know, we've got a situation where, you know, there's an old term of art, attractive nuisance. But these are also blights on a neighborhood, not just a legal standard of attractive neighborhood. So I mean, attractive nuisance. So I think we've got both. I think it's time to showcase, staff, that the council's behind them and that we realize that there'll be issues come up. And I will not be on their backs. I may ask questions about how something worked out or not, but let's give them a chance to make this work. And the other actions we've taken, which I think, I mean, nice to have a progress report too on crime free and so forth at some point soon. But so, you know, I just think the framework is, I've been around, I've been watching, I've watched strategies, all these different strategies, a strategy layback and the answers will come. I don't think that works. And I said that I didn't think it would work, and it hasn't worked. So let's move on. And let's encourage staff, and let's encourage them to come if something's not working or we need to tweak this some more, come back so that we keep moving, keep the momentum.
Mr. Metzner, any other comments?
I suspect, I'm not so sure about the blighted property issue, but I certainly suspect that this council's decision, if we make it to allow interior inspections of non-blighted properties without warrants, is going to be a violation of the Fourth Amendment. I don't understand, blighted properties, we may be able to find an exception to, I'm not sure. I sure would like to see our attorneys give us an opinion. There is case law. It doesn't take more than Google, Fourth Amendment, and interior inspections. And you immediately start seeing Supreme Court cases all over the place that have addressed the right of a municipality to inspect commercial premises. I got the feeling that you aren't going to see a whole lot of law on the issue of inspection of residential premises because it's going to be so clear that you can't do it.
But in this case, we're only doing it for the blighted vacant--
No, in this case, we're going to do it for everybody, not initially.
After one year, right.
Not initially. And that's why we have time.
Well, would implied consent be a part of the registration? You know, by basically knowing what the rules are and saying--
You don't implicitly consent to an unreasonable search and seizure constitutionally. I mean--
Well, maybe it's not even implied, maybe it's overt in the application for your vacant structure license or whatever.
Well, you're telling somebody that if they don't sign this, which consents to a search, that they're going to be fined by the government. I mean, I honestly do not believe that--
It's a legitimate question. I'm not arguing with you.
--it's constitutional muster. In the same respect, I'm not as positive about the blighted property issue, okay? Seriously. I have just researched this for 35 seconds, literally, when you started talking, so that I can tell you, the Supreme Court has said you don't need a warrant to have administrative searches of mines because of safety issues. Liquor stores were an exception. I have the feeling that based upon what we're hearing today, that you could make out a very reasonable argument that it is reasonable to search a vacant blighted property. And I support that for all the reasons that are being given. We aren't going to be interior inspections of other properties for upwards of a year, okay? So we can pay us warrants all day long, whether they're constitutional or not. If we're not actually doing it, we have the ability to amend it if we find out, you really can't do that. And I really don't think we can go into non-blighted, residentially owned buildings and inspect them because we say we can. Having said that, I reiterate, I don't have those same feelings about blighted properties. There is a safety issue there--
Right.
--that we may not be able to articulate so easily on non-blighted properties. But I would just ask our attorneys to really look this up. It's right there. It's not hard to find and give us an opinion. And I'm not talking about before we vote on the ordinance. I'm talking about before we start actually enforcing the, those other aspects of things.
And I just want to read for the record, the definition of blighted condition as it's being put in these two code revisions. A condition is blighted when it exhibits objectively determinable signs of deterioration sufficient to constitute a threat to human health, safety, and public welfare.
And that's why I think you may be okay with your Fourth Amendment issues.
Right.
Okay? Now, somebody may make the argument that you have to produce evidence of that for each property. But again, these aren't things that are going to be contested or brought to our attention unless there's some really good reason. But, you know, in the same respect, if somebody ends up seeing there's a $15,000 fine associated with the property, they may decide to start looking into those aspects. But otherwise, and I do support the ordinance, my biggest issue with this ordinance, you've resolved, right? That was my biggest issue.
Can I ask a question? Are you concerned with the residential properties of those that are still being held by the people who own those properties but moved? Is that the concern?
Yes, yes, because, you know--
That would be specific because otherwise the banks are holding the majority.
Well, of course, the, this is not, not me agreeing with anything, but the Supreme Court sure does seem to be ruling the corporations or people for purposes. I mean, I agree with you, Penny. I might disagree with you.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, are we going to have a fight because the banks?
Well, the banks have the right to under, you know, they could, they could. I'm not saying they would, but they, they could bring it up. I'm not saying they would, but the Supreme Court sure seems to be, every decision they've had in the last two years seems to be recognizing corporations as human beings. I'm not agreeing with that at all, but that seems to be the trend. And again, you know, it's only going to get brought up in the context of one of two things. Either a huge fine or your example and these guys when they go and find something. Find something and charge the owner. But again, that's a whole different story because I've often told police officers, hey, you had two choices. You make the arrest, you get the drugs, and you lose the case. Or you don't make the arrest, you don't get the drugs and you lose the case. And, you know, so I'm not saying there's something horrible with that, but those would be the two examples I think that you would find somebody actually bring this up. Either a huge fine or criminal activity found within that was being done by the owner. Because a non-owner wouldn't have any right to object to that search.
Then they would challenge their standing to be there.
There would be no standing for those people, for if they were a non-owner. They wouldn't be able to raise the issue. It would only be if you found criminal activity by the owner in there.
Right.
So, you know, we may never face that issue, period, ever. But I do believe that it is an issue.
Legitimate point. Mr. Munson? Go ahead, Penny.
What happens in the respect that a person that owns the home but has moved away and it's broken into? Then what? Okay? When you're in there, the chief's men would be in there. All right? So then where does that place? If they're seeing something when they enter, then what?
That becomes a different story. That's hot pursuit, that's seeing a crime. You don't need a warrant.
You know, like somebody, you know, like down on Broadway, they kick the door in. So therefore, our officers would go in. That place was empty.
You don't need a warrant for that situation.
You see? I mean, now we're talking, you know--
That's a whole different situation.
You know, they're still homeowners, so, yeah.
But that's totally different.
Okay, so the whole thing is what you don't want. And trying to get all of this done and for it to work is that if push comes to shove, then I guess we'll just have to see how many out there is just willing to go kick those doors in, I guess. I don't know. You know, Lou, I have to be smart and cynical. But it's the truth because we always come to a part where, you know, the courts, you know, this or that. And we continue to try to clean this town up and there's a stumbling block. That's why I said last week, and I love you tonight, because I'm hoping this can go forward. Because that's why I said, is it going to be December 31st? December the 31st before it's voted on? You know, because it is.
We got the votes to put this through, Penny. We got the votes to put this through. We got four votes right here to put it through.
I think it's good to act swiftly, but I do think it's our obligation to be deliberative, which is what we're doing this week and this week.
And also, when we talk about the Fourth Amendment--
And that's fine.
You know, we always have to be careful because, you know, these things are put in place to prevent government overreaching. And it's so easy with good intentions to overreach as a government. And we see this all the time. We're so lucky to have a police force like we have and a chief like we have. I mean, what we're seeing going on in other parts of this country, we don't see with our police force. And we don't see the things in this community because of the professional staff we have, not only with the police, but with everybody here. We don't have these kinds of problems. But these things are put in place to protect citizens from government and we can't ignore them. That's all I'm saying.
And I'm not ignoring. I don't want somebody to try to get into my house without having a warrant, okay? But when it comes to empty structures, this is what I'm, I just want it to be able to be finalized as to, okay, what can we do and what can't we do? And I don't know, I mean, I've been listening. But how many of those real estates, the homes that are on the market that are empty? Did we ever get as to how many?
We haven't been able to crunch that number.
Okay.
We did look on Zillow.
Okay.
And if you go to the city's website, staff have used Zillow to map out the city boundary. And Zillow probably captures the vast majority of homes that are listed for sale. And currently, according to Zillow, as of last week, there were-- And currently, according to Zillow, as of last week, there were 300, approximately 370 properties listed for sale--
For sale, but not knowing if it was--
In the city.
But not knowing who the owner, if the bank has got it, or if the person who lived there moved and still has it.
Correct, or if it's vacant.
Yeah.
That's how many are actively listed for sale through agents, and I think we had checked off as owner occup, or as the owner selling as well. So--
I still think that would be something that we really could get our hands--
We would have to go through all the properties listed for sale--
I know, I know, John.
--and compare that to our list of properties that we believe are vacant.
Yeah.
And--
But it certainly would be interesting, especially in the market that we're in, as to how many, you know, are really--
Yeah, in terms of--
Still owned by.
Yes, and how many are occupied that are for sale versus vacant.
So it sounds like we're--
Go ahead, Mr. Munson, please.
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, John, but thank you for giving me your time.
Sure. We've discussed an issue of problem down on Locust Street any number of times. I think the name is Brock. Is that his last name?
Yes, sir.
How do you see this ordinance affecting his situation, which I think everybody sitting around this table would agree, is a terrible situation for him?
I would see it in a timing capacity. I believe our current staff managed to, over an extended period of time, managed to take a case to court. I believe the, the bank is now acting to repair the roof, but--
Okay, well, that's news. I didn't know about that.
That's the one to the south. Yeah, I knew that was--
That's good news.
It's actually, Paul's still here.
Oh, yeah.
Can you comment on that, Paul?
Yes, that was one of those cases that we did end up taking to court and did seek the court authority to abate the situation if the financial institution would not. So right now, they are working on making the repair to the property.
Okay, good. And Paul, thank you for everything you're doing out there, and where the pedal meets the metal. You've got tough duty. So, this is, this, under this ordinance, this is an issue that, that could get done. This Locust Street issue is an issue that could get done much more quickly, perhaps.
Under a vacant structure program, yes, sir, for a variety of reasons. One, that property's been vacant for a number of years.
Yes.
So, if, if we have a program, a property like that, it is blighted, it would come into the program immediately. We would have staff dedicated to conduct those inspections. We are seeking that final piece of the puzzle, which is the abatement fund, to be able to kickstart, if you will, the abatement of those conditions.
Well, how rapidly after this ordinance is passed, assuming it is passed, and it sounds like it has the votes, is there going to be an effort to put together an abatement fund? I mean, that's a key part of this working ultimately.
I think what we will recommend, sirs, that we come back in September and flush out ideas about how that could happen. At the last meeting, we presented a little bit of information. Councilmember Elshire had asked in terms of the transfer tax in the city, in terms of how much fund, or how much money the county collects. On average, it's $300,000 a year that the county collects in transfer tax on sales of properties in the city. Staff would recommend that we develop a fund of $100,000 as seed money. And if we had $100,000, given the workload and the, the timing of the courts, we should be able to have that type of a program revolve.
That's a good place to start, and it's a good suggestion. Okay, thank you.
We've also proposed some changes to the registration fees. As a result of the changes that we're proposing to the program, as a way to make the program fund itself.
And on that, we took a stab at coming up with the fees, and a lot depends on the direction that we received here tonight, if we're going to the six months and that. The numbers we plugged in was if it's foreclosed, if it's blighted, if it's placarded, is uninhabitable, those properties are $500. If they're not in those categories, that the fee would be $100. So if, if your house is sitting there vacant but generally maintained, it'd be a $100 annual fee--
And for six months.
After it's brought into the program. Yes, sir. And on the non-residential properties, it would be 500 at initial and then 1,000 thereafter. And that's basically for commercial mixed-use properties. And--
For the blighted?
Yes. And then for, for the non-blighted, it would be the 250, the 500, and the 1,000, which that's what the current ordinance says. And we're trying to be really conservative in our projections here, because the last thing we want to do is fund positions and then be back here saying that the program's not working in terms of providing the sufficient funds to, to have the staff. So we are being very conservative in our projections, and based upon very conservative projections, we believe that this funding scale would work. Last week, we proposed $150 for all the residential properties. We're saying reduce that to 100, but for the blighted and that really increase the fee. And we thought--
Labor-intensive cases, that was.
They would be the labor-intensive cases, and that seemed to be a principle that the mayor and council were getting at last week.
And I think as far as the timeline goes, obviously, we're not going to be introducing this with these changes this evening, but, I mean, if there's no objection, we could put this on to introduce at a special session on September 9, and then pass the ordinance at our regular September session, if that sounds like a plan to everybody.
The only change we made in what you brought tonight, it seems to me, was the timeframe on the blighted properties for the interior inspection. Is that--
Major change was removing the property owner as an enforcement individual--
Well, they already did that.
Well, that, no, that's change, you mean from tonight's meeting?
No, that's just in the memo.
Oh, because it's just in the memo.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, they made, okay. Those changes are not incorporated in the legislation--
No, sir.
--you're just proposing them.
Yes.
Okay. Answers my question.
Does that--
Oh, I know they made all those--
--time line work for staff?
Proposing to make all those changes.
I believe we would need 30 days between introduction and approval, so we would not be able to introduce on the 9th and then approve at the regular September--
Oh, I see.
--session. I'll double-check that with, with legal counsel or Donna.
Sometimes it's 10 days between.
Depends on what the ordinance is.
Yeah.
What type of ordinance?
Yeah, I believe this would require the full 30.
Okay. Well, we can check on that, and we'll, we don't want to challenge a bold--
The 9th.
Yes. Yeah, we could do introduction on the 9th and adoption thereafter.
If you guys are okay for the 9th, and mayor and council is, why don't we put the special session on for the 9th?
And administratively, from a staff perspective, we would hope to kick off this program the first of the year, because we have the run a licensing program that is basically our fiscal year, and we wouldn't want to have both programs initiating and expiring at the same time. We would want to stagger them. So one would be calendar year and the other fiscal.
Okay. Well, with that, we will adjourn this work session, and we'll come back at 7 for our regular session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, staff.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the 48th regular session of the Hagerstown Mayor and Council. Invocation this evening will be led by councilmember Brubaker, and we'll follow that with the Pledge to the Flag, so please stand as you are able.
Citizens of Hagerstown, Greater Hagerstown, Quad State area, our fine state and nation, we need to respect each other and our aspirations. None of us lives for or because of ourselves, we all live as part of a community. Help us to work together to build communities that sustain and enhance life. Awaken in us an awareness of how best to raise up the hopes and dreams of all our members. Make our communities places where all can live fully and fruitfully. And finally, in all we say and do, keep us aware of the need to ask how our, our aspirations affect the country and those, our community and those around us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag--
Of the United States of America.
--and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Basic announcements. Of course, our rules of procedure were adopted on September 24, 2013. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. And just to review our meeting schedule, we have no meeting next week to continue the celebration of Labor Day. We'll still be working here at City Hall, but we won't have a council meeting that day. We will have work sessions on the 9th, 16th, and 23rd at 4:00. Tuesday, September 30th at 7:00 PM will be our regular session. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to appoint Andrew B. Kramer as administrating, administrative hearing officer.
Still moving, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion by Mr. Metzner and a second by Mr. Munson to appoint Andrew Kramer as administrative hearing officer. This is for those cases that end up in violation of any of the property management codes and the crime-free ordinance that we passed earlier this year. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Mr. Kramer is appointed, and we'll get him sworn in soon. We do have some guests with us here tonight. First, I'd like to acknowledge Troop Eight is here, who meet at the St. Anne's Catholic Church, I'm sorry, St. Anne Catholic Church, and we're glad they're here tonight. I saw they had their notebooks out, so they're going to be taking good notes and reporting back, reflecting on this local government experience. We're glad they're here. And we also have some awards to give out, the Hagerstown, Highlight Hagerstown Awards, and I'm going to turn it over to Alex to talk a little more about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we're presenting the 2014 Highlight Hagerstown Awards. And we have three categories for awards. There's a residential category in which there are three winners this evening. There's also a one non-residential winner, and there are three winners for downtown adopt of planters. So as, as I call your name and we show your property, if you would join the mayor at the front to receive your award and also get a picture. Our first property tonight is 1314 Hamilton Boulevard, Ann Abbott and Larry Painter. Our next property tonight is 513 Reynolds Avenue, Alan and Heather Holman. I don't believe they are here this evening. In the adopt a planter category, Discovery Station of Hagerstown, West Washington Street, accepting the award is Tom Rieferd.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're here.
And, 1, 3, 1, 2, 3.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next winner for the adopt a planter category is Otterbine United Methodist Church. They have a planter at front of 35 North Potomac Street. And I don't believe anyone is here representing tonight, but give them applause. And our last winner this evening is Poole and Kane, 29 West Franklin Street, for their And just briefly, these properties were nominated through the city's website and were referred to the Hagerstown Beautification Advisory Committee, which chose these winners for this year. And we are also, we're always looking for nominations for 2015, so if you know of any gorgeous properties around town, let us know. Thank you.
Good job, Alan. I want to thank staff for doing all the things they do in addition to just this program to highlight all the great things that are happening in Hagerstown. Thank you, Mr. Rieferd. It's nice seeing you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Penny.
At this time, we'll move into citizen comments. Just a reminder, the citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual. Meetings are televised and recorded. Your comments will appear on air and on tape and on YouTube. So with that, I'll call up the first person on the list, Mr. Jan Hyatt. And if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium and saying your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Jan Hyatt, 921 Dewey Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, what I'd like to address today is the curfew for juvenile ordinance. It's Chapter 79, and in particular, concerns me because of the behavior that I've had to live with during the past couple of months, based on kids that are not from my block, but from other areas around my neighborhood. And I don't know if you're familiar with the curfew itself, but basically, it allows juveniles, which is defined as emancipated unmarried under the age of 16, and they're allowed to stay out on school days until 11:00 at night and on weekends until midnight. And I have to be honest with you, I think if a roomful of responsible people would take a look at that, they would say that that's not tolerable at all. These are the same kids that can't behave when the sun is out, and to allow them out 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 years old, to be out unsupervised, to do whatever they want, nothing but trouble. And that's what it's been for my family and for my neighborhood. And if you're familiar with Dewey Avenue, it's a decent neighborhood. It has been until this year, and it's very unfortunate, because what is happening is you're not regulating behavior with this ordinance. Basically, what the city government's doing is giving these kids and their parents permission to let the kids stay out until 11:00 or midnight, and I find that intolerable. to let the kids stay out until 11:00 or midnight, and I find that intolerable. I would ask that the council consider reviewing this law with a view in mind of making this curfew something that is more tolerable to the responsible citizens of this community and not in favor of the juveniles who are disrupting and destroying our neighborhood. I'm asking that the council hold the parents accountable for their children's behavior when they're out caught late at night and destroying property. I've had to make at least 10 phone calls to the city police in the past several months bearing from disturbing the peace, destruction of property, stolen property, and just downright disrespectfulness. And more than half of those calls were calls that were made after 9 or 10:00 in the evening. We call it the Sheets Express. These aren't kids on my block, I can assure you. These are kids that are coming from all around the community, and they're walking through our neighborhood and they're causing trouble, and I'm sick of it. I'm also not satisfied with the police response in a number of these cases. Extremely disappointing to have officers come out and say there's not much we can do about somebody that just egged your house at 10:15 in the evening. It puts the responsibility on the homeowner. This block only has 19 houses on it. Right now, there are three houses on that block for sale, unheard of. Two of those houses, by the way, are houses that have been broken into or had attempted breaking and enterings in the last 20 months. These people felt so strongly about how bad this neighborhood is that one has moved out and one is ready to move out. To further emphasize how bad this is, we now have five video cameras from one end of the block to the other end of the block. It's not up to the police this neighborhood. The police should be taking more concern about what's going on with this. They should respond in an appropriate manner, in a manner that gives us some satisfaction. A couple of weeks ago, somebody was called on a porch. They called the police, the police did not come out for the video, they emailed them, they did not come out for the video. They took the video into the police station a week later, and they were able to identify the person and they've charged them. But we know what that's going to be. It's going to be the same thing that's happened all up and down our street where the citizens have been inconvenienced a number of times by showing up in court only to have these masterful juveniles ask for jury trials or ask for attorneys and play the game. I've had my neighbor had to go to a preliminary hearing and a regular hearing only to find out the state's attorney's office wasn't even prepared to try the case. It's just disappointing when the victims of these crimes are punished more than the juvenile delinquents. I'm asking that, at this point, you guys consider imposing a reasonable curfew. And to me, I don't think 9:00 for somebody 15 and under is completely. There's a number of exceptions in this law, and these are good exceptions. I'm not opposed to going to church or going to and from work and social activities, but these kids aren't doing any of these things, I'll guarantee you on that. And I would ask that also, this is a neighborhood you guys can do something with. It's triage. There's some parts of town that's never going to be helped. You can send as many police as you can want to, but our area can need help and does need help, and we need it now.
I hear you. And I would like to address the curfew issue because I have followed up with the chief of police about that issue. I'll look into some of these specific things that you raised here tonight, certainly, but I do know that the curfew law is enforced. The police, however, aren't going to be putting kids in handcuffs and taking them to jail for curfew violations, but I do agree with you that parents have to do a better job of parenting their police.
They need to be forced to, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think anyone wants the city to tell people how to be a parent, but I do think, well, I do agree that parenting is the key here. And certainly, anytime any crime happens, it's not a good thing, and I do think our police do a great job of following up on any kind of investigation.
I would strongly disagree with that, and I have a number of proofs of that, and I'm not happy with it. I've been a citizen for this, in this city, for 39 years, and I'll tell you what.
I want to assure you.
I'm getting ready to go.
I want to assure you that this mayor and council cares about every neighborhood.
Well, we'll see.
And I'll be following up on your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Peter Perini is the next person signed up on the list.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, members of the city council.
Good evening.
Mr. Zimmerman, thanks for giving me a few minutes. My name is Peter Perini. Mailing address is post office box 2947, Hagerstown, Maryland 21741. And I am here to speak for just a moment about my candidacy for the Board of Education, but before that, I'd like to congratulate all the winners of the Highlight Hagerstown Awards. And it's a great program and one that hopefully encourages others in the city to beautify their areas and strive to reach the award level. So for all those who are listening to in the sound of my voice, I encourage you to keep up the good work. As I mentioned, I am a candidate for the Board of Education, and as Councilman Brubaker said in his invocation, you know, we all need to work together to build our community. I understand there's not necessarily a direct umbilical connection between the mayor and council of Hagerstown or any of the other municipalities in Washington County with, directly with the school system, as there is, for example, with the Board of County Commissioners, with the funding and so forth. But I feel that it's important for the Board of Education to reach out to all nine municipalities, including our county seat here in Hagerstown, and work closely with all of the members of the mayor and councils, especially Hagerstown, because, you know, there are 14 schools in the city limits, roughly a third of the number of schools in the system are in the city limits of Hagerstown. And I don't have the actual figures for the number of students in Hagerstown, but I would imagine that the roughly third figure of the 22,000 students applies as well. That's a lot. I mean, that's a big chunk of the school system that resides in one municipality. And I just want to say that I've worked with each of you, or most of you individually, as well as collectively as a group in the past, and, you know, I would very much look forward to the opportunity as a member of the Board of Education to work with the mayor and council of Hagerstown to make sure that we move forward with special projects in the city, not only downtown, like is being discussed now with the academic hub downtown, which I think is a great idea, a great project. You know I'm a big proponent of downtown, but in, as the mayor just mentioned, in all the neighborhoods and all of the schools within the city limits. So again, I applaud you for your work and with the city and the administration and staff of Hagerstown does, and I hopefully will look forward to working with you for the next four years as a member of the Board of Education. So thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Peter. The next person on the list is Mr. Robert Miller. Mr. Miller.
I'm a spoiled guy.
That's okay. That's impossible.
I am here to address the mayor and everybody.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Robert E. Miller, 650 North Prospect Street.
Thank you.
Hagerstown, Maryland. Yes, I am here in regards to the walkway where I fell. They put up a little handrail at the steps. That's it. You've got to walk to the step before you can reach the handrail. There's a step down over 17 inches into walkway. No handrails ever been put up. This walkway is brick pavers, and it is nasty. There should be a handrail all the way down this walkway. And not only that, I'm here because I moved in this place and it was never inspected. The landlady told me it was never cleaned. Okay, I said, "I'll clean it." Turned around, here is a big hole above this radiator on the pipe in this bedroom. I wind up with bedbugs. She says, "That's my problem." Okay, I moved out of that room, exterminated it as good as I could. I moved into another room, and she sent me a letter telling me, "That's my problem." She has Elrich come in there to spray for bugs in the kitchen and the bathroom. They don't go around the bedroom, the baseboard. They ain't in there five minutes and they're out. It looks to me like the poor people in Hagerstown don't count anymore. That's what I'm saying. Why do we have a war and fight for our rights? It just doesn't hit me. And now, I got this letter from her, and I called, and she's never returned my call. Okay, now, I'm paying my rent. The fifth of the month, she's taking me to court, and I'm paying it up to date. I won't owe her a dime. But she done all these back porches. She thinks that makes everything right. There's no lights in this walkway, and she keeps saying, "Yeah, I need to put a light here." Well, it's never got there. The only light is daylight, and she is very inconsiderate. And I'm not the only person dissatisfied with her. I'm maybe one of the only persons that got backbone enough to come up here and say what I got to say. And code enforcement has never met me out there like I asked them to, to go through that walkway and see what I'm talking about. And if I don't deserve that right, why should I have served in the service for this country? And that's what I'm asking you, Mayor.
Well, I will make sure that someone from code enforcement will visit you at 650.
I asked them to call me, and I would meet them in the walkway and show them what I'm talking about.
I will certainly follow up with staff and make sure that someone comes, and I may even come personally myself to see what you're talking about.
I appreciate it. I think it's about time somebody does something for the poor people.
And what, well, I do agree that poor people deserve as much attention as everybody else. What apartment do you live in there, sir?
I live at 650 in the back, and that's the only way I can get there unless I go down the alley and walk up the hill in the back. I have no front entrance. I only have rear entrance. Sure, it's remodeled and all the porches, sure, but ain't a damn one of them complete. Not a one of them complete, and they keep moving on to the other ones. They're doing a good job. I'm not saying nothing against them. But the thing is, shouldn't something be complete?
I agree. I think your concerns are valid and serious, and I will, like I said, I'll follow up with staff and personally come inspecting myself and follow up with the appropriate folks.
My phone number, Mrs. Ny has it.
Let me just make sure I understand, is the handrail in the back?
Handrails and cleanness.
The holes?
There's human in this walkway, sir.
I'm sorry, sir. Please, we have children in the audience, so mind your language when we're taping this too for the public. But I want to make sure, I want to make sure I understand all the issues that you're saying. The handrail, I heard you say something about a hole in a radiator or behind a radiator.
It's my room, yes, sir.
You had bedbugs. Do you still have the bedbugs? Are they still an issue?
I threw mattresses away, and I spent, I bought over seven cans, $7.5 at the Flamby Dollar, which is to kill bedbugs. I've done everything I could. I put bombs off. I moved out of that room into another room.
But you think the problem still persists?
Pardon?
The problem is still there, though? The bugs?
I don't know if they're still there. I don't go back in that room.
Okay. Well, like I said, I assure you, I'll follow up with staff. I know you've been to several meetings now. It sounds like the issue's more than just a handrail, though, in this case.
Yes, this is more than a handrail issue.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next person on the list, Mr. Pete Priola.
It's Pedro Priola, 2 West Washington Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. What I'm here to actually discuss is to thank the downtown movement for this wonderful weekend that we had. I tell you, the work that they put into this thing and what the downtown was this weekend was phenomenal. I mean, really. And I hope that this is the beginning for what I came in business here for. I mean, I had the best weekend that I ever had since I've been open, I've been open now almost a year. And I hope this is like a comeback for the downtown Hagerstown. The pop-up stores, I mean, on Sunday, there was people shopping everywhere. I mean, I had a three-hour line at my coffee shop, which was wonderful, I mean, to see that. And I understand there's other things that are happening with the downtown movement. They're not unveiling anything else yet, and I hope it's more to come.
More to come.
More to come. There you go.
That's right.
But I'm here also to talk about a couple other, just little things. I understand that there's a city ordinance for loud music coming out of cars. And, you know, I'm right there in the corner of, you know, West Washington Street and Potomac, and half a dozen times a day, I have to just yell out to tell these people to move, to turn their music down. It's awful. I mean, and I know there's a downtown ordinance. A suggestion that I may have, and I was talking to one of the police officers about this, about putting some signs up, saying that there is a city ordinance about music being so loud. And I don't know what the actual ordinance is, but I know that it's, you know, I have people dining outside and they're hearing this foul language coming out of this car with the music that they're playing, so I would like to, you know, address that. One of the other things that I would like to address is the no-shirt policy. Is there a ordinance about?
A no-shirt policy? Is that the Greens and Grains policy or?
No, is there a no-shirt policy? I mean, downtown, you know, as you all know that I've come from downtown Annapolis, people cannot, you know, walk downtown, you know, men cannot walk downtown with no shirts on. And it's kind of disgusting, I may say, you know?
Depends on who has their shirt off.
It depends, yes. But most of it, about 80% of the people that walk downtown with no shirts are, you know...
I hear what you're saying, right.
You hear what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
Okay, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Another issue that I have is about the bikes on the sidewalk. Just yesterday, I got hit by a bike. I was coming out of my store, just made that turn. I didn't get hit by the bike, I hit a bike. A kid was coming around the corner, and he almost hit, and he fell over, he almost hit the police car. And it's not the first time that this happened. When I first put my café out there, people, I guess people didn't know there was any tables and chairs, and one guy just came, went crashing right into my chairs there. Now, of course, I have a grill out there and stuff like that now. So I know that there was an ordinance that was changed not too long ago about allowing kids and adults to ride their bikes on the sidewalks. I just want to see if there's anything that the city council could do about making those changes, because there's more and more people riding their bikes.
Especially towards the square, when you have, like you say, outdoor seating and things like that.
Seating and, yes.
It's more of an issue, yeah, absolutely.
It's becoming an issue right now.
Right, especially if we have more feet on the street.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's part of what we're hoping that that's going to happen, so. That's it. Thank you.
Well, you raised some very valid concerns, Pete, and I'm sure we'll be following up with some discussions internally here on how we can follow up on those.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your business here in Hagerstown, too.
Oh, appreciate that.
Glad you had a great weekend.
Great weekend, there's more to come, too.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
The next person on the list is Nancy Allen. Come on up, Nancy.
Hi, Nancy Allen. I reside at 924 Oak Hill Avenue, and I wanted to first commend the council and the city for a wonderful weekend that you put on this past weekend. My husband and I had an opportunity to go down on Sunday and just walk around, and it was so exciting. In fact, it was so exciting, I had to get out my dress that matched your bumper sticker because I was so excited to see the families, the people, just, everybody was upbeat, the shopping, it was a wonderful experience, and I'm so happy to hear that we're going to have more of those activities. On that note, I would like to make a recommendation that the next time, if you could notify the Realtors, as you know, I'm a Realtor, and we would like to work collaboratively with you, maybe have an open house. There's plenty of homes on Oak Hill Avenue that we could have had open, and it could have been a destination right downtown, you know, walk right downtown, trying to promote that live and work type of concept that we're all aspiring to reach. And so I think that would be a good next step, and I understand there's going to be some events coming maybe in the fall and Christmas, and there's just a wealth of opportunities there. and there's just a, a wealth of, um, of opportunities there that we can really, um, encourage this type of activity. And it was very refreshing to see that. Um, on, on a sideline of that, I'd like to mention too, that we need to be very careful on how we are encouraging the growth downtown. Um, and by that, I mean that it, it's so important to have, uh, the families coming downtown, people to feel safe and secure. And the gentleman here spoke a moment ago about the crime and the activity that he's experiencing at the North End on Dewey. We also are experiencing that increase in crime. All the way out to Morgan's Avenue, we've been very, um, tuned in with what's going on, trying to notify our neighbors when we have incidences happening because we feel like the more we can try to talk amongst ourselves, maybe we find something or maybe somebody sees something that they can report to the police. So we've been very proactive in trying to, um, to help the police as much as we can. And I would like to commend the police department because I think they've been doing, um, a good job. At least we've been seeing, um, good response. Several times I've spoken to Chief Holtzman about, uh, the incidents of the crime and just what can we do as neighbors and as, as residents to try to help him in his job. And, uh, with that respect, he's come up with a couple of ideas of, you know, increase some lighting in the neighborhood and whatnot. I'm a little concerned about some of the ideas because I feel like as, as much as they would be proactive, but I would also like to have citizen input from the residents who live there as to whether that's the direction they'd like to take. Because, uh, you know, you have to understand why people move into these neighborhoods and it is because of the charm and the architecture and all the wonderful things that the history brings to the experience of living where you live. So you don't want to do anything to alter that or to change that. Um, you know, we're not, we don't want these bright lights shining into our homes that would encroach on our privacy and that needs to be respected. So while on one hand, we're really trying to, um, make it less of an attractive area for the criminals because we don't want dark corners and shadows where they can lurk and loom, but on the other hand, we have to be careful how we do this so that we don't, uh, change the ambiance of the neighborhood and, and totally destroy the character of what we have here and the historical area of, of the North End. So I would like to just say, you know, if you could consult with us or just let us know. Again, communication, I think, is, is so vital in no matter what you're doing so that you can be successful. So I would like to encourage, you know, the city to, to communicate with us, maybe ask us, "What do you think about this? What do you think about that?" Not that we have to run the city by committee, I'm not saying that, but I do think citizen input is very, very important. And, um, with our little, uh, emailing group, we've had some very, uh, good conversations. I just want to mention, you know, some of our citizens have, have taken on to just try to look at some of the statistics. When are the, when is the criminal activity happening? Would these increased lighting really help at that point of time? And it's questionable. So what we have here, and I'd like to give, you know, present this to the council for your review. Uh, this is from, um, Brad Stottermeyer from the Crime and Intelligence Analyst at the City of Hagerstown. And he just kind of broke down when some of this criminal activity is actually occurring. And it seems to be more during the daytime and less during the, the evening hours. But that's when it's being reported. So we don't know really when the criminal activity is happening. We know when it's being reported and if there's some correlation to that. And just how can we be the most effective way to try to deter the crime? And I know I'm digressing here, but I, I have a point here that I'm trying to make. When we are looking at our demographics downtown, and I think we need to be very cognizant of where we are socio-economically. And while we're doing the, the most that we can to try to attract, um, patrons to come down, to spend money, to want to be here and, and use our resources here, I think we also need to look at, how can we enhance that? How can we make it a better place? And, um, I hope that the city is working collaboratively with the county on that regard so that we are careful in that we're not totally, um, attracting, uh, residents who are going to be just taxing our services that we have here, but that will also be contributing to the tax base. And lastly, I'd just like to leave you with this one last thought. And that was, um, in looking at some of the, um, what I saw this past weekend. And I went around and I kind of was doing my own little survey, asking everybody and encouraging them to come tonight and say what a wonderful experience they had with the pop-up shops. And, uh, what I heard time and time again was all the merchants who were there were saying what a wonderful experience it was, how many people they were having come into their venues. And I would like to encourage that, that growth of the city by incentives, whatever it takes to bring the businesses downtown, you know, because this is so important to our very existence. And I think, you know, we're all on the same page here, so whatever we can do to try to incentivize instead of over-regulate is, uh, definitely the way we need to be going. Thank you.
Thanks.
Would you like to have copies of these?
Please, if you give those to our clerk, she'll make sure we get them. I was playing Realtor this weekend. I was showing friends who were in town around the neighborhood, uh, because, and they live down in DC and they're looking to buy a country house out here in Hagerstown.
Well, it has, you know, the City of Hagerstown has so many charming, uh, beautiful apartments, the architecture, the street lights, and a lot of it is consistent with downtown Washington. You can see Georgetown, Dunbar Oaks, Montrose Park. There's a lot of similarities. So I can see why somebody would be attracted to this location.
Sure.
We just need to get...
Your dollar goes a lot further here, too. On citizen input, I would say you probably don't have a mayor and council more committed to getting stakeholder feedback and citizen input. So I appreciate your efforts in the neighborhood, too, to keep us all, uh, communicating and talking because I think that the vigilance is important. And on incentives, I would just say downtown Hagerstown is the most heavily incentivized neighborhood, if you will, of any in Washington County. Uh, and one just need to contact our Department of Community and Economic Development to find out all the incentives available. So if you know...
I did do that and I had a question for the sergeant. I wanted to know, are we part of our Green 3?
We're getting there. Uh, we passed a resolution last year and, uh, the, the staff are still going through the process of organizing that. But yes, we are signing up for that.
And I would also like to offer to the mayor and council that through the NAR, National Association of Realtors, we have a very proactive Realtor party with a lot of incentives to try to help small communities, you know, with their growth and their economic development. So I would encourage the city council to reach out to the PMR Association of Realtors because we have some resources there that could help. And I think, you know, again, we would like to be able to work with you collaboratively because it helps us all. It really does, um, we really can work together with them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a public hearing. I'm going to invite staff. Oh, that's right. Is there anyone else who wanted to sign up, uh, to speak, who didn't get a chance to sign up, who would like to speak? Okay. All right, well, I do appreciate the comments. I have more to say about the downtown movement, but I'll, I'll proceed with the agenda and wait until my turn. So a public hearing on the proposed franchise agreement between Antietam Cable Television, Inc. and the city. Scott Nice Warner, our, uh, well, I don't even know what you do here, Scott. You can tell them, I don't know what your official title is. And Karen Giffen, our community affairs manager. Director of Information Technology and Customer Service.
There you go.
There we go. And, uh, of course, Bill Naren, our city attorney. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We appreciate you being here tonight and, and we are here for a public hearing on the proposed franchise agreement with Antietam Cable Television, Inc. Um, this is the team, uh, from the city staff. We also worked with CBG Communications, uh, working with Antietam Cable to create the, uh, franchise renewal agreement, uh, which is in your packets. Uh, this is a 12-year agreement with Antietam Cable. It is a non-exclusive agreement. Please note that we do enter, uh, the public hearing notice as an exhibit and that was published on August 17th and August 19th. We believe that this agreement is very good for the citizens of Hagerstown and the city of Hagerstown. Um, and we do appreciate, uh, the respectful negotiations we had with Antietam Cable Television. And Brian Lynch is in the audience tonight. Um, we are going, not to read through the whole franchise agreement tonight, uh, but just go through some of the highlights. Please note, in the work session, there were two questions, um, that council, uh, believed. The first one's from council member Martin Brubaker on the, uh, late fees. And I will let Bill Naren just explain, uh, an update on that. And also, uh, we did add District Court to one of the, um, areas for the cable drops as well. And that is already in there. On the late fees, I'll have Bill Naren talk with that, um, and then we'll go through a couple of the highlights.
Uh, briefly, on the late fees, the agreement indicates that late fees would be, would be charged in accordance with applicable law. And there is, um, law, state law in Maryland, uh, under the commercial law article, section 14 dash 13, 15, which regulates, um, statewide the maximum late fee that, that can be charged. So, um, we are simply incorporating the, the state law in, into this agreement as far as the, um, late fees are concerned. So I can go into more detail, but basically, we're just following the, the lead of the state on that.
I did talk to, to Bill about that, so, uh, you know, if anybody has curiosity, he has more information. Thank you for the follow-up.
Some of the highlights include that Antietam Cable will pay a franchise fee of five percent of its gross revenues quarterly. Uh, performance evaluation session during year six of the franchise. Uh, there are customer service standards set forth. The grantee will provide 60 cents per month per residential subscriber during years one and two of the franchise, which is the current amount as well. And then, uh, 70 cents per month per residential subscriber after, thereafter for access or INAT capital. Um, and this is passed through on subscribers' bills.
You want to explain what PEG is?
PEG is, um, the, uh, government, educational, and public access channels. Thank you, Bill. Uh, there are two access channels, one for use of the city and one for the Board of Education and HCC. And please note, we can access a public access channel, however, um, there must be a detailed criteria regarding submission and approval plan before that would occur. And that would entail a, a number of items such as operational budget, a plan that programming would occur. So that must occur first. Uh, there are triggers, uh, for the provision of access channels in high-definition format. We will have PEG video on demand capacity of three hours per month during years one through six of the franchise and five hours per month after. Availability of access program listings in the electronic program guide and complimentary basic and expanded basic services at specific locations. And again, there's a number of highlights and it is a large agreement. If you have any questions for us at this time. And, uh, also, um, Bill will go through the process of the next steps.
Basically, the, um, there'll be, 30 days from today, the record will be kept open for any citizen comments or input. That would be through September 25th. After that, the, on the, on the, um, uh, at the next, uh, regular session of council on September 30th, we would be proposing to enact the ordinance, uh, to enter into this agreement. And it would be effective, uh, 30 days later or, uh, October 30th. So that would be the plan at the present time, subject to, um, the council, um, doing something different. We, we currently have an existing, um, franchise that has been extended till December 1st, so we have a little, um, little extra time in there, um, if it's needed to, um, deal with any input.
I just want to commend you because I know this has been a lengthy negotiation. Uh, it's also very expensive, uh, but it's, I think, as well worth it when you come out with a 12-year agreement, uh, that does, uh, really provide a lot of benefit to the city and the citizens. So thank you for all the, the work and time and energy that went into this. Any other comments from the council?
Do you have anything to say?
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the topic, uh, of the Antietam Cable franchise agreement? You'll have another opportunity next month if you, uh, decide to read the ordinance and the agreement and, uh, have some thoughts. At this time, we'll move into, we'll close the public hearing, but we will keep the record open for 30 days, as our attorney stated. Uh, we'll go into city administrator comments.
I have two reminders for the mayor and council. One is, uh, next Monday, September 1st is Labor Day, which means that, uh, city hall will be closed. Also means that for next week, all of our refuse and recycling set-out dates will be pushed back, uh, one day for everyone throughout the city because of the closure of the landfill on Labor Day. And then the other is just a, a reminder of what Rodney mentioned to the mayor and council during the work session. The city has a project underway for the widening of Broadporting Road out at the center at Hagerstown. The end of Broadporting near Salem Avenue will be closed to all traffic in both directions starting next Tuesday, September 2nd. Rodney's projecting about four to six weeks for us to complete the, uh, widening to four lanes, uh, the relocation of utilities, the construction of curbs, and completion of the project at that end of the center. So we're encouraging people through our, uh, public news releases to use the entrance off of Route 40. And just a reminder that that, that project's funded with a, uh, contribution of $250,000 from the county. It was previously under their jurisdiction. And then, uh, contributions from the developers will pay for the rest of the project. That's it for me.
Thank you. Moving on to council comments. I think I'll start all the way on the left with council member Nye.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hyatt, I had gone to visit with Mr. Hyatt and his wife and daughter. The juvenile problem has gotten totally out of control and I would like to see it put on the agenda for discussion. I also would like to see us have the Baltimore City ordinance that was passed for curfew on juveniles. It is amazing as to what they have done. Now, here is our problem. Our problem is now it's getting through to juvenile justice as to we have a problem with juvenile. Because they are the thought that it's not as bad as what we think it is. And with our police officers who are very frustrated because they will take a child home, that child can be in the door and out the door and nothing flat. That's why there has to be more responsibility on the parents. If they cannot handle that child, then they have got to seek out on what they can do. Because the problem is just escalating. I received another phone call from people that were up on Cannon Avenue. Man's had his windows broken out three times. They start down at CVS and McDonald's and work their whole way up to the fairground. They will try to destroy an air conditioner if it's in the window. And if it's running, people aren't aware of what they are doing on the outside. So now it's just trying to get where they are actually located and pictures of them. And that's why the importance of this needs to come forward. We really need to look at it. I have more and more people that are calling about kids in all of these sections of towns. So it's time that we do take a look at it. And I would appreciate it if we could do so. And, sir, when you said about shirts, I've already brought up the issue on pants. Because I'm sick of looking at pants that are below the waist. And I know that there are, um, Ocean City is one, that so many inches below, you are fined however much money. Wildwood is another place. There are more and more cities that are going to this. And I wish that we, in fact, would look at this. So thank you for bringing that up. And Nancy, I continue to follow you. Because every time an email comes in, I have a friend that says, "Okay, Nancy sent this email." And I said, "Well, I'm sure I'm going to get one at city hall, but tell me what it is anyway." And I applaud you for what you're doing out there. I really do. And I know that it has always been termed that the North End, because you're across the tracks, always gets what you need, but we're all struggling. And I just hope that now we can all work together with this because we're having a major problem here in the city. We really are, especially when it comes to properties. Yeah. Yeah, but thank you again, too. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Munson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This morning at nine AM, bright and early, Mr. Mayor, at least relatively bright and early, I represented the mayor of the city council and the city of Hagerstown, the citizens of the city of Hagerstown, at a groundbreaking ceremony for a permanent senior citizen center. You'll be reading more about that in the newspaper, I'm sure. It was a great ceremony, and we will have a permanent senior citizen center at the old Army Reserve Center in the East End in about a year. It's going to take that long in order to refurbish that building. But I want to make this point. The senior citizen center came about because of the close cooperation of the county commissioners and the city of Hagerstown. It would not have come about otherwise. There's a lot of talk about the differences between the two bodies, but the fact is, when push comes to shove, the two bodies, the county commissioners, this council, our staffs, are working together very hard to help make things, good things, happen in Washington County.
And it doesn't even take pushing and shoving.
And it doesn't even take pushing and shoving. You're right. And I just wanted to point that out. And I had lunch at Pete's today, down at Greens and Grains', and I had a great lunch. And Pete, I have to tell you, I went down there for dinner tonight, too. Had a great BLT that Cheryl fixed me. And while I was sitting there eating, looking out the front window past your tent, I saw a guy go by without a shirt on. He did not belong in downtown Hagerstown. And as I understand it, Annapolis has solved this problem, Baltimore has solved this problem, and I think Penny points out that Ocean City has dealt with the problem, too. And it's getting awful close to the time, and we have to deal with this problem. So that's the end of my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Munson. Mr. Metzner.
I'll be brief because I think there's going to be a lot of echoes of what I say. Suffice it to say that this weekend was just phenomenal downtown. Augustoberfest has always been phenomenal, especially the last number of years. The pop-up shops certainly were the difference this last weekend. And I think I can wrap it up this way. I've lived in Hagerstown for sixty-one years. When I was downtown, I ran into two friends who've lived in Hagerstown longer than I have, and one of them owned a business retail clothing store downtown for many, many, many years. And to quote them, "This is the nicest we've seen downtown Hagerstown in the last fifty years." And I think that was very close to being accurate, and it is an example of what can happen, and I look at our scouts, understand what happened this weekend. Government and citizens got together and decided that they were going to make our city a better city. Government cannot do it alone, and citizens cannot do it alone. But when the two get together and decide they want to get something accomplished, they can, and this weekend was a prime example of it. Thank you.
You're here. Mr. Brubaker.
Well, enough people have said how great the events were, and I was able to sample every day, and I think just about every venue. But I want to thank the people that made it possible, again, public and private, in all these events, really, at the Augustoberfest, the downtown movement, it's such a great thing happening in our town, for the pop-ups. And finally, I want to thank the folks who won the awards and highlight Hagerstown. Boy, we need that, and every year, we have some good candidates, and it shows what can be done in Hagerstown. And finally, I'll add some things to your list, too. You know, I like cars, I like motorcycles, but I don't agree with being able to have open pipes, virtually open pipes. There might be a little fabrication in there. In my day, you had glass packs, but they're nothing like open pipes. And I think that is enforceable, and it's not enforced, and also, an extreme amount of reckless driving on a number of two-wheeled vehicles. So, you know, those are problems I have, and again, I'm a vehicle guy, but I don't think you should be able to abuse it to the point where it gets in the way of everybody else. So we have that, and we also have people shouting, and that's a little harder to enforce, but, you know, that seems to be, loudness seems to be a big thing, a lot of people shouting across the street. So I'll add those peeves to my list and hope we can find a way to make downtown and the rest of the city more civil, is the way I put it.
Thank you. Mr. Alshire.
First, I apologize for not being early. I had some work that kept me till about six-thirty.
We're glad you're here now.
It is unfortunate when you spend a good bit of your time legislating public decency. Clearly, that is the point that we are at on a number of occasions, and I would add one to that list. But first, I wanted to address, I know you had some conversations earlier this evening about the deck and vacant structures, and on the deck, I know that I stand in the minority, but I continue to wholeheartedly believe that the additional infrastructure spaces for parking we build downtown be quicker. We see reinvestment on the private side of private properties in downtown, and I won't give up that cause and call for additional parking facilities. But I understand that that, you know, that's been made. The second is, as folks probably follow Facebook, the issue of the donation containers, I think the one out at the Giant, the old Giant Eagle site. I will tell you that I'm aware of at least two jurisdictions that have an ordinance for the prohibition of unattended donation containers. I do have a copy of that that we could review, and, you know, if those entities, which by and large, if you read, if you read enough information on them, are really in the textile trading business, they're not really in the donation of common goods business, and if they're not going to properly manage them, then I think it's our responsibility to prohibit them from our shopping centers and to have our residents go out and have to clean them up because...
Because it's dumping.
That's right. Because the property owners and the proprietors of these donation facilities won't. And it's a pretty simple ordinance, but something I think that we need to put on our list. The other thing I'll say is, you know, my family, this is, I think, the third wind-down we went to this year, and I can certainly take no credit for wind-down or the Augustoberfest or the downtown movement and the pop-up shops. That credit wholeheartedly belongs to city staff and the citizens and the businesses that participated, and so I'd like to thank them because it was a wonderful time. I will tell you, as it relates to the bikes on the square, I did notice when we were down there for Friday evening, there were kids riding bikes around, and the only issue that I saw was, we do have a number of alleys that folks use to traverse, you know, the different blocks there within that first block of the square, and, you know, we were almost hit coming out of the one block near the plum, and it's simply because of the line-of-sight issue. I mean, the buildings, you know, butt right up to the sidewalk, they butt right up to these alleys, and, you know, kids are kids, and, you know, they're out riding the bikes and not often thinking of the pedestrian traffic coming around. So I think we do need to maybe look at something within that first block area. And then, two other items I have. One is, if you haven't been to the city golf course recently, you know, I remember three, four years ago, it was not in the best of shape, it was not in the most playable of conditions at times, but I'll tell you that city staff have, you know, been over backwards in leaps and bounds above what it was a couple of years ago, and if you're looking for a great, affordable place to play, you know, it is certainly at the top of the list right now, and it's in great, great shape to do so. So thanks to city staff for that. I often say, if you're not going to get rid of it, you need to maintain it because those are your two choices, and I think we're making the right choice there. And the last is in regard to our police services. Just an incident I'll share with you very briefly. Either on Wednesday or Thursday night, I decided to take a walk with the dog around the back of City Park on the road back there, and there was clearly an incident, you know, a domestic incident between two individuals occurring in City Park later in the evening. And, you know, I called nine-one-one, as our police chief always says, you know, call, 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 you know, whatever it is, just call. And so I did, and it clearly was an altercation, but within two minutes of that call, three police officers arrived on the scene, were able to address the altercation that was occurring between the young man and the young woman. And I will say to any resident out there, at any park out in the more rural parts of this community, you will be lucky to get the level of service that those police provide in such a quick response time. And so I'd like to thank the officers that did show up and were able to address the issue.
Thanks, and I just can do nothing but echo the thanks for everybody's work on Augustoberfest, and I cannot take any credit for it, as Mr. Alshire pointed out. It could not happen without the work of our dedicated staff and the volunteers. As far as Augustoberfest goes, of course, the grand poobah, Charlie Sekula, gets a lot of credit, but really, Karen Giffen, who's here with us tonight still, deserves a lot of credit for being a part of that organization, really leading the pack when it comes to organizing Augustoberfest and generally just being a positive force behind that. And the downtown movement, I mean, this is, this is something. And I'm fond of saying this old Chinese proverb that says, "Those who say it cannot be done should not interrupt those who are doing it." So despite all the negativity out there about things will never be the way they used to be and all of that other stuff, there are people in my generation, in the younger generations, and even some more older folks who get it, who see the potential that Hagerstown still has and who are making things happen. And for the most part, there are private entrepreneurs who have just decided to take upon themselves to go, as we heard last week from them, you know, approaching landlords and sometimes with the city's help and support. And really, I hope a lot of light bulbs went off for landlords in this town who can also see a higher and better use for their own properties, and that people are willing to put, you know, their own money and sweat and time and energy into making Hagerstown a better place. The feedback I got from all the vendors was also pretty fantastic. I know a friend of mine who is an artist who said, "I made two-hundred dollars yesterday." And for an artist, that's pretty darn good. You know, anytime they can sell their work, they're happy, or even if they can just perform on the street, they're happy, like they were doing. We have pianos now out in public. You might see one on the square, so we invite anyone to come and start playing the piano and just creating music for everyone to enjoy. I know the sourdough bread lady ran out of bread all three days. She was almost out when I got there on Sunday, and it wasn't even one o'clock. And I know that she was talking with the landlord at the Grand Building about rents. I mean, I heard these conversations going on. I saw developers who were pointing and talking about the potential and what could be done. So I know that there is an energy. I mean, it was palpable. You could feel it. It was in the air, and Pete, the place was buzzing. So I think we have nothing but good momentum going, and I am very proud of that group, the downtown movement. I don't want to say one person's name because I'll forget to say everybody's name, but they say they have about a core group of fifteen folks, and after this weekend, their list has now tripled for people who want to volunteer, so I encourage you to look them up. This group also raised almost three thousand or maybe over three thousand dollars through a crowdfunding campaign online through Indiegogo, so you can Google that if you want and donate to their cause. This was a real professional endeavor by a group of very energetic volunteers. Just the level of the signage that they put on storefronts, they enhanced our parking map by talking to private property owners and to getting them to allow us to advertise their lots as available. And the feedback that I got was, geez, I didn't know so easy to park in downtown Hagerstown. So, you know, there were a lot of myths that I think were perhaps busted. I also know that there was a lady I know who's good friends with Nancy Allen, who said to me, her name's Betty, who was downtown and says, geez, I didn't know the Washington County Arts Council was there, and they had such a great gallery. And so we hope they open their front door more often and invite people in because it does make a difference when those doors are open and people feel welcome. And I think that's the, the whole idea of the downtown movement is to just keep that kind of momentum going. I will also say that I've gotten compliments from citizens about the golf course and have personally thanked the staff that work out there daily who maintain that because of the positive feedback that I get from folks who use that on a regular basis. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that we have a very serious need in this community for volunteers to be on our boards and commissions. So I would encourage anyone who's out there in the audience or listening at home, if you want to get involved and get engaged, please contact the city clerk, come down here to City Hall, you can go online, I believe, under the city clerk's page, and find an application to be on our boards and commissions. I promise you, I will review that application. I will interview you. We need a new generation of leaders in this community to serve on our volunteer boards and commissions, and so I put out that call, and we'll be following up with more advertising to get more people engaged and involved. I will also say, I forgot to mention last week, you know, Sheets in my neighborhood and Nancy's neighborhood came up at last month's meeting. Was it last month already? Has it been a whole month? And I just want to say, I'm very grateful to Sheets for taking it upon itself to change their hours to close from twelve AM to four AM. It has made a huge difference in the neighborhood in terms of cutting down on the traffic, the noise that often is associated with that traffic and the loud stereos. They've also committed to putting more people out there to pick up litter, especially with the Sheets label on it, because I think they've realized that's not good advertising for them to see their trash on the ground. So I want to thank Sheets publicly for taking those steps. You know, that, where it is now, a Sheets would not be approved in that neighborhood. It does not meet the current zoning standards, and so I appreciate their listening to citizen feedback and responding in the way they have. And I think that just about covers everything I wanted to say. Does anyone else have any other comments? All right, with that, we'll move on in our agenda to the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meeting held on May twentieth, two thousand fourteen, May twenty-seventh, June third, June seventeenth, June twenty-third, June twenty-four, July eighth, July fifteenth, July seventeenth, and July second, two thousand fourteen.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? The only thing I would like to say is that the only reason that list is so long is because our city clerk and other city staff were taking so much time to count signatures for the phony petition that was submitted by our police and fire unions. With that, any other comments or discussion? All in favor of approval of minutes, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Minutes are approved. Under the consent agenda, we have items for the Department of Community Economic Development, Police Department, and Department of Utilities.
Mayor, I hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. Have a motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Under unfinished business, we have the approval of an ordinance amending chapter one ninety-seven rental facilities to provide necessary support to city neighborhoods. This would be in line with Catalyst Project number eight.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to adopt an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, chapter one ninety-seven thereof rental facilities. These amendments will require that exterior inspections will be conducted... will be conducted annually. The annual per-unit license fee be increased to $75. Catalyst Project Number Eight, from the community's city center plan, calls for action to provide the necessary neighborhood support to regulate residential rental properties. These amendments are consistent with the city's vision and commitment for the housing in neighborhoods and the community's city center plan.
Second.
A motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Nye's have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next up is new business, Item A, introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 173, peace and good order of the city code.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council introduction of an ordinance to amend Chapter 173, Section 173-6, peace and good order of the city code. This amendment would remove the public drunkenness language. Future charges regarding disorderly intoxication types of complaints shall be charged under the appropriate sections of the Maryland State Code.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. This is introduced. Item B, introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 25-1, drug-free school zone.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council introduction of an ordinance to amend Chapter 25, Section 25-1, drug-free school zone map of the city code. This amendment would reflect the changes in the city's school boundaries with the addition of the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts downtown.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is approved. The ordinance is introduced. Item C is an introduction of an ordinance, Chapter 70, cable television and video open systems... Open video systems, my apologies.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the attached ordinance be introduced to amend the city code to add a new Chapter 70 entitled Cable System Ordinance.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced. Item D is the introduction of an ordinance for the Antietam Cable franchise agreement.
Mayor, I hereby move that the attached ordinance be introduced to authorize the city of Hagerstown to enter into a cable television franchise agreement with Antietam Cable Television, Inc.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
I just want to make it clear that these are introductions. We have looked at these in work session, but I think they'll be approved at the next session, subject to, you know, anybody introducing something in between.
Any other discussion?
They're not being approved tonight.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced. Item E is the approval of a resolution, a memorandum of understanding with the Hagerstown Police Department and Washington County Sheriff's Department for Search and Rescue Committee.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and city council approval of a resolution to authorize the city of Hagerstown to enter into a memorandum on understanding with the Washington County Sheriff's Office to provide for the coordination of efficient, effective, and professional search and rescue services to the citizens of Washington County.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? Just another example, as Mr. Munson was pointing out earlier, of city and county cooperation. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Item F is the approval of a renewal agreement, of an agreement between HPD and the Drug Enforcement Agency.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval to authorize the renewal of a memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Drug Enforcement Agency. This agreement renews our commitment to provide two officers and one sergeant to the city's DEA office to work specifically on narcotics investigations in the Hagerstown and surrounding areas. In return, the DEA provides reimbursement for overtime costs associated with drug investigations, up to $17,374 per officer to the city of Hagerstown.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the agreement is approved. Item G is the approval of an after-school program at the Parkside Community Center.
Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of proposal provided by the Hagerstown Housing Authority to provide after-school program at the Parkside Community Center located on Simmons Avenue. This program was originally funded by the State of Maryland Sea Safe Program, but in recent years, has been funded through the city's general fund. Through this program, the Hagerstown Housing Authority provides a variety of constructive after-school activities to area youth. This program will run for the 2014-15 school year with a cost of $18,881 in city funding support.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Munson... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Funding is approved. Next up is the approval of an after-school program, the BTJ Dance Group.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of city funding to support after-school programs conducted by the Hagerstown Housing Authority. This program was originally funded under the Sea Safe grant, but in recent years, has been funded through the city's general fund. The Hagerstown Housing Authority provides qualified dance instructors to provide a supervised program for the participants in a safe environment. The city will provide up to $3,500 from the general fund for the BTJ Dance Group after-school program.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the funding is approved. Next up is Item I, the RC Wilson Phase Four Consent Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the Hazen &amp; Sawyer Construction Management Critical Phase Service and Regulatory Compliance Proposal for the RC Wilson Phase Four Disinfectant Byproduct Rule Two Project at the RC Wilson Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $430,132.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of a purchase for the Munis Software Maintenance Renewals.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for approval of the renewal of the maintenance contract for support of the Munis Municipal Financial Systems Software Retailer Technologies Incorporated. Cost of the renewal is $176,576.23, including $30,000 for database administrative support and $146,576.23 for support and update licensing for 26 program modules in use by city staff.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. And Item K is approval of funding for the Hagerstown Police Department Cameras.
Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the creation of a new capital improvement project in FY15 titled Crime Camera and CPTED to address the immediate replacement needs for the police department's aging crime camera network. This project will also support neighborhood-based crime prevention through environmental design improvements such as street and alley lighting. Initial funding for the FY15 project will come from either FY14 general fund surplus based on fiscal year-end results or savings from the deferral of FY15 police department vehicle purchases.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes. This is really coming out of the general fund. I mean, so, it's something we pretty much have to spend. And it's, you know, one more thing we're trying to do to track crime in neighborhoods, and we're not everywhere. And this is just to replace and update those we already have. So, but it is one of the efforts we're making. And we'll try more.
There it is, really a general fund thing to spike the specific place they got it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries. The last item is Item L, approval of additional city funding for Children's Village.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of city funding to support Children's Village of Washington County Incorporated. Children's Village plays a vital role in providing safety, training, and education for children in this community. City funding support in the amount of $5,000 will be from existing funds currently allocated for contributions to other agencies in the fiscal year 15 general fund budget.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes. There's little to nothing motion that I disagree with. It is not a reflection of giving money to Children's Village any more than it is a reflection of giving money to 600 other nonprofits in the community. And you could easily insert any other nonprofit's name into this motion. I am opposed, as I have been before, because we continue to arbitrarily select and pick and choose simply based on who comes through the door. And I'm not certain that that's a most responsible approach in the limited amount of funds that we do provide for nonprofit-related services.
Any discussion?
I think Mr. Alshire has a point. And we've approved some funding tonight, small amounts admittedly. But they add up. And, you know, with the fiscal crisis facing us, it's going to be very difficult to continue these funding items. And I also agree that it's arbitrary, that whoever comes before us has a good cause, and we tend to support it. There's a good rationale. So, I think I'm going to join Mr. Alshire in opposing this one.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, there... Please.
There are a lot of good causes, lots and lots of good causes. But we're elected to make decisions. And indeed, this is one of the good causes. So, for that reason, I'm supporting it.
And I would just like to share with the council that staff and I have met on a process to address what Mr. Alshire said is a pretty arbitrary process.